I would like to give this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united in a visible liberty and justice for all.
Our will now have a roll call. Darlene Redd here, Dennis Sandmark.
Here.
John Myers.
Here.
Monty Jack.
Here.
El Cora Scott.
Here.
I will now entertain a motion to approve the May fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen emergency minutes.
One second.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed, minutes will be approved. It is now time for public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and please use the sign-in sheet, your address and contact information. We will give you five minutes to address the council.
I'll do it. It's here. Now you guys, aye. Good. We'll get back to you then, see you for then, huh? You guys can vote, we got a base book, you know what's going on. Ready to be both, huh?
We're ready.
Everybody, the party starts now. This is what, uh, the town has had to have. You guys want more time before the car show, so I heard, so, um, we're pretty much just full here, there's two things I want to add on this. I'll say next thing is if you have a report with the city, or if you're, uh, apparently there's been a revision that I have from guys that are, who everyone made it to have.
What kind of revisionist?
Um, it looks like they've added additional, they've added some space, uh, we'd like to fail out of, out of, uh, it's, it's, we love you, definitely need a helicopter to be, to be, to be, to worry about.
Yeah, he did, he mentioned something about, about making talk to the State, the County Council.
Yes, yes, so we had a helicopter coming to share, uh, we had a lot of vehicles already confirmed, a lot of characters confirmed, I confirm three cars today, a lot of the rides, and four childhood, and maybe a hundred, let's say, we didn't sign part, those four cars were little, and they had twenty dollars. So we had several vehicles on, back, from the day on, since the action, or his, uh, their pride, uh, their own pocket, wanted to cause their trophy for the, in honor of the city, so, we go thank their, and any kind of their money. We really appreciate it, you have a trophy, bringing back, again, how many people, like we did, that was, that was.
That's great, you know, what that is.
Uh, we had most businesses in town, all over the things, and, uh, it looks like Alabama first reading somebody that these sentences, we have lost support, which is just great. And anybody seen our vote for on Saturday, with thirty bucks to pull, with five other vans, it's a, it's a big deal. On top of that, twenty-five my dollars we raised, we probably more than likely spent close seven thousand, twelve hundred dollars globally, between the gas, who, fuel, they spent, probably out of that, I mean, I know at least six hundred of us here in Canada from gas, and we stopped forward with that, and we ate when we got back, and we fueled again, in between, so, uh, we're going to the car show, and then, and then, everybody remembers last year, because I was just very astronomical, so, you know, a hundred and seven last year, we shoot for a hundred and eighty-five, this year we had a hundred and three trophies last year, we had a hundred and sixty-five issues, things are wrong, they are better, uh, does the city have any questions for us? Any concerns, or comments, or issues, or positive things, negative things?
All right, he's changed, this is the same application, just, just amending the street closure.
Correct. Yes.
All right, I will send that back through, and, and have our folks look at it.
Okay.
And you are aware that it is your responsibility to get the, the updates, and also your responsibility to take them back from your desk, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. If you take the pink today, you just put it out there, and, uh, you don't need to really take it available for us, I can take it.
Yeah, direct the product.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, last year, we had a problem with that.
We did, so that's why this year, I'm happy to pick them up.
Yeah, so, uh, get those after, headed down.
So, uh, this, this, I know it's all kind of different, as far as, do you clean the streets, do you manage the park, and the batteries, and all that, is there any reason to double check in here, uh, at the big board?
Have you made arrangements for all of that?
Well, I have, I did that last year also, again, so I think that's, so.
Do that one week.
I'll take one minute. So if there's any way to spend, do you want anything, we can notify all the systems and residents around there, because you're parked there, parking there, during the day of the show, what do you have to do with those, we're going to get this property again? There is no ordinance, or there is no, uh, reprimand for, in the city codes, that says that they stay, they don't want to do, they don't live on the street, which we closed here, who's going to, play that, uh?
Would you mind calling tomorrow, sending that report with me, and we can go over all the stuff?
Are you available, like, ten o'clock at night?
Pardon?
Are you available at ten o'clock at night? I'm pretty busy speaking about the same time, you know, when?
If a living upon it's necessary, I have to.
I should have had it on ten seconds, when I have kids. The only thing I want to say, is, again, I know I appreciate the sponsorship, I grow and profit from the trophy, and I think the city and everybody, and I get all the work all the time, for my, I, I think you guys have anything to try and decide, is, um, because that, that can be actually, that might be all around, together, or?
Let's hear them out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we will have a community project report, and you will be given five minutes to, uh, address the council. The first one up is the update from the North Central Deserve Business Facilitation, we've got a lead. Can you sign this off? Um, yeah, we want to, or, yeah, but, there's nothing, there's something, uh, bless your heart. Okay. Um, I'll sign, I'll do this, hopefully I'm still able to multitask. Uh, I've prepared a little update packet for each of you, your paper clips, so it's one, take one, pass it down, just like school. Um, first of all, we want to express our sincere appreciation to this court, city of Cameron, for our endeavor, we are a nonprofit organization, and our entire purpose in the community, in the six counties actually that we serve, is to assist entrepreneurs and small businesses with resources, information, and I just call it the H O E R, letting them know they're not out there alone. I included my business card, our latest brochure, and then, um, also, I attached a summary sheet of our quarter year to the funds, and then our latest newsletter, which you guys got a little shout out, so, um, yeah, with my email address on there, if you want to send me an email, I will add you to our quarterly newsletters, and I will automatically email you the newsletters, uh, if you would like. As you can see, today, we have served eighty-two clients in the six county area, thirty-two of those, we've been new businesses, and fifty of them existing businesses, that were either trying to branch into a new market, uh, maybe they were just had an issue, they wanted some new, more information on, and we have had this session, uh, where businesses wanting to retire, and they just wanted to learn about finding someone to operate their business, and we didn't find the person, we just made those connections, uh, and then facilitate part A and B giving together, but we don't, our job is not to do the work for the business, but rather, just give them assistance and resources to do it themselves. The breakdown by county is shown there, as you can see nineteen of our businesses are just about an order of, so far, have been in Clinton County, um, and fifteen percent in the CAF County. And then I did break them down by the basic industries, so that you can see what type of businesses, um, have been contacting us for assistance. Uh, we have had several business celebrations, uh, we love celebrations, we like to get with the business owners and help them celebrate good things, and, uh, and help the public know that they're there, and, um, and then give, uh, kudos. Um, and then also introductions, this is one, I probably meet tonight Mr. Mark Baker, who is the chairman of our organization, and we have a little challenge, or I, it's, okay, I give a challenge, to see which of our team and board members can make the most introductions. Mark seems to think he's gonna get seven tonight. More point, be right, who might be wrong. We're gonna wait and see.
I'm winning, so I beat all seven, too.
Uh-huh, so, I, I tried to do something a little bit, I didn't see breakdown by county, um, county introductions, and I think you can also correlate that back to the number of businesses that we've worked with in those counties, there really isn't a relationship. Uh, we work off referrals, I never go into our local businesses, ever, ever, um, it's all off referrals, businesses come to get a license, and we say, you know, hey, we've got this free service in our area, so we never solicit, that's another. Any questions from the council?
I'd just like to say, we appreciate you coming, given that, especially since we sponsor, you know, being some funds, um, just keep this updated, and get to know where our money can be.
Absolutely, you just put me on the agenda, so I'm convenient, and, okay, I'll do it. I'll, you do appreciate it, because without these contributions of our municipalities, it won't happen. Thank you. Now, I believe that next we have a new aspect, the Cameron Area Arts Festival for two thousand and seventeen.
Uh, thank you for having me, generally, and, uh, I have a five, I have a, I was trying to find the participants from the city, for the Arts Festival, looking to have seventeen, the first arts festival was last year, two thousand and sixteen, not Cameron Crossroads, Fresh Festival, also one of these, there is a Monday Festival, which brought came in, the Cameron Arts Council sponsors festivals are all, both overseas who are performing. Uh, this year, so far, we have, uh, the, the, and a lot of those, from things we've had in Sparkville, we were putting it back together to make it a, a whole thing. The pep show, the Cameron Area, they usually draw a hundred people or so, the Cameron Municipal Band, usually draws a couple hundred people, every, every week. We're going to have on Friday, an art show sponsored by Caitlin Burke, who sponsored the children's art show last year, and also have a professional art show, that's going to be sponsored by, I mentioned a couple of other persons, that's all the First Christian Church. Uh, there will be a craft and food show, the Sterling Center, on Saturday, there are Larry, who's, who can consider, who carries art, I'm very glad I'm not doing the car show this year, and we have a guitar jam session at the Old School Library, and, uh, a young fellow from January, Russell, who's a professional guitarist, and also a pedophile. On Sunday, Katie Rhythm is going to sponsor the Gospel Music Festival again, and I've had several calls on that already. Uh, on Monday, different performing artists, and I've had several calls on that, and I have made a schedule, completely, uh, pretty people, and people are calling us, and deciding how many things they have to perform. And we're also, we've got several tours and works, depending on who's stepping up to do, we have some garden tours, and things like that, that we are hoping will help building, and develop, especially with the younger people, to, uh, skills, uh, resumes, portfolios, so that they can have their art displayed, or their performances, they can have an audience, so that, in saying, this is what I do, this is what I love, we appreciate some help with the cost for, to give me, uh, well, darks and costs, and all, and I would like to do some additional advertising, apart from just the, uh, the Fourth of July Festival, although, uh, I have talked to Shaila Shugley, and we are working on some, that's on news advertising. So I would also like to be able to give participation awards to everybody who participates, and possibly, I'm hopeful that we'll have enough money for surprises, so, I think that will give more incentives for people, and also more recognition for individuals. So I, I've made a budget, I believe it's attached, and if you have any, any questions, I believe you just can add.
I, I do have actually one question. So, are you affiliated with Larry? How do you think he's?
No.
Okay.
And I don't say, I don't know anyway, no, he's been using, the Arts Council last year put together all of these things, we tried to advertise, so we have kind of an umbrella group over there, basically promote, it's a promotion thing, I would like to see the Arts Council grow, to be in umbrella groups, such as the Allen Arts Council, and St. Joseph's, and we've been studying this, so, no, Arts Council has not per se done anything for Larry, which I apologize for that, but he seems to be completely competent on his own.
Yes, maybe I am.
And so, but now, I'd like to consider the car as part of the art form, and so we call it part of the Arts Festival.
Okay.
Anyone else? I guess we could, we could sit, you have some discussion and motion, and then specify your motion to, uh, approve this application for the Arts Festival?
One second.
Go ahead, second. In a second, so I guess you play off. The next item on the agenda is the manager's report, and Zach is filling in for Mark.
Yeah, second strength over here, so we, we always get approval. Um, again, Mark did kind of put together his manager report, uh, in your packet, um, and we did, kind of going down to dig there, uh, we did receive a request for a liquor license, uh, for the upcoming car show, uh, but given the timeframe for that, there's not time for us to get that to the pre-reads necessary, uh, to have that approved, uh, for that event. We can, I'll, if the council can make some changes, everybody will, we want to make sure that, uh, any change here would be something that would be effective, would be forward. But like I said, it just, it did quite make the timeframe, rest of the pre-reads there. Um, as far as the latter structures goes, and we received some bids on, on those, Tim and, um, and Paul be working on those, reviewing those bids, and we'll have those, have those coming out. Um, the CID, uh, the Buckler, probably thirty-six, is moving along, um, I believe they're, they're getting close to appointing some board members, so that should be, should be moving along very nicely. Um, there's, work is still continuing out on the, on Land and Drive, uh, we're getting closer to completing that project, um, and then also coming up on the Third Day July thirteenth, there will be an e-doc and council work session, working on incentives, that will be coming up. Those are kind of some of the things that, that Mark had, um, just a couple other things, um, that happened since then, um, we have been talking, uh, at this time, it doesn't look like we're gonna have a need to have a July third meeting, uh, with the fourth being a holiday, kind of like a holiday weekend there, uh, we don't want to have any pressing for that, because we probably would add that meeting, as of right now. Kind of an update on the pool, uh, we've been having some issues there lately, uh, we initially thought that, uh, it was a chemical issue, uh, given the fact that we are feeding chloramines now, and that's been changed in the last couple of years, and, um, we did have a little bit of a problem last year, so we took some additional steps this year, and hopefully rectified those issues, our first, you know, little, little results, um, but after, I said, we, we started testing the pool, we were pretty regularly, and found that, you know, the pH was good, chlorine was good, uh, it was just that turbidity was the only issue, the water was safe, we just, you couldn't see, um, so that, that prevented, uh, that created an issue, the guards, I think the only city that can see the deep end, so that's the reason why they've been closed, the water's still safe, it's just a, it's been a safety issue. Um, this weekend, things didn't get any better, uh, as of, as of Thursday and Friday, we thought we were on, on the right track, and then all we could do, but, uh, things didn't get better over the weekend, so, uh, I believe the city staff found the issue yesterday, uh, we were able to secure the parts today, and as of two o'clock today, we, we had the problem fixed, it was a, a breakdown in the, in the filter system, uh, we did, so we did find the problem, and we got it fixed, and hopefully, it shouldn't be an issue moving forward, so. Um, another thing, uh, just a, update from last meeting, uh, we did today, today we did talk to the contractor that we fix in the water, and go over there on Prairie Chest on that, that surface line, so, I, I did, I did speak with the individual after last council meeting, and, uh, she said she did have a contractor, and he didn't contact us today, so hopefully this will be, that's in here.
Is there any discussion or questions for that?
Just a quick comment, appreciate the staff, and, and given Mark working on the current industries, all, it's my understanding there's been, uh, more than several incidents in the public, directing a lot of the band, the dollars, and that, uh, the manager of Mary Joe, so I would just hope, uh, everybody's doing their best, and I would hope that, maybe to ensure the community would not, uh, approach that, so, I'll get out there for whatever's worth.
Anyone else?
I would just like to echo Councilman Clark's comments, too, I mean, I've had several complaints, I wasn't aware that the, the volunteers have been directed at the guards and the manager, but I've had several people concerned, that, that, that the cost had been closed, and I want the good staff to be able to continue to stay, and then resolve to find the issue that that fixed, because running a large municipal pool like that is not a easy task, and we have something like turbidity, it's very difficult to find what causes, so, Phil, thank you very much for being on.
Definitely pass it on, and that's what, we were excited to find, to find the problems, but, so that, that, that is, kind of, kind of, I wouldn't pass it on.
I do have one question, in fact, the public can't answer this evening, but, the entire community that was posted out by the hospital, and that didn't go through, and then they were looking around Walmart, and several elderly people asked if that was like, you know, not gonna happen, or, or where that stands?
I remember discussing that, but I don't know exactly where that, where that stands right now, um, I will visit with Mark, and we will, we can answer on that, see what's that.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mark.
I, I don't believe they are supposed to be, uh, so, we do, we'll, but, uh, they were just curious, like, oh, I don't know, you want to, Mark has attended meetings in Kansas City, so they'll be able to tell you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the next item is unfinished business, we will now have a second reading of Bill twenty seventeen dash thirteen. Bill number two thousand seventeen dash thirteen, and ordinance stating exceptions to section six dash one fifteen, drinking in public allowed, of Division One, generally, of Article Five, alcoholic beverages, of Chapter Six, licenses and business regulations, with respect to public sale and consumption of malt liquor and wine, on Third Street, from Walnut to Cherry Street, Chestnut Street, from Third Street to Fourth Street, Cherry Street, from Third Street to Fourth Street, Court Street, from Chestnut Street to Cherry Street, and the local parks, including public right of way within the city of Cameron, within the city of Cameron, Missouri, Crossroads Crush Festival. I will now entertain a motion to pass Bill twenty seventeen dash thirteen on a second reading. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All, five in favor, zero opposed, uh, Bill twenty seventeen dash thirteen passes. The next item is Resolution twenty seventeen dash eleven. Resolution two thousand seventeen dash eleven, a resolution of the city of Cameron, Clinton, the CAF, and Caldwell Counties, Missouri, to provide tax abatement under the Missouri State Statute, Chapter Three, Fifty-three. I will now entertain a motion to pass Resolution twenty seventeen dash eleven.
Second.
A first and a second discussion?
Yes, any questions related to that?
No, you know who we are.
Do you guys have any questions, please, if, if replayed?
This comment, just appreciate you working on it, and I think this is actually prior to you, the city board, sort of, thank the city terms for the diligence and assets, whatever it's together, uh, it's a very big piece of work.
Yeah, it's, right? If I had a chance to, uh, maybe you could, uh, possibly, if you're also, maybe I care as a, a lot of, it's, and, and, thank you very much for your continued work, and, and thank you.
Okay, all of us, please, are passing Resolution twenty seventeen dash eleven.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is a rate discussion.
Can we go there? All right. Zach has been working on this back and forth, and we've agreed that we're gonna help the things, but it's a very special, um, discussion, because obviously I have chances, I have constituents as a limited official, but I need to get answers from, uh, he also has things he needs to get answers from, the way he needs those about, does things, and he's been, has very ability that he can't get those answers, unfortunately, you know, I'm not delaying this on Zach, so don't take this as a personal, he's not able to answer my questions. So, they do have some testing, uh, I mean, on the other end, you agree, because I believe, any time you relax, but, uh?
Yeah, as far as testing, accuracy of meters.
Correct.
Yes, yes, we have, we have contacted an individual company, the company that we want to come up here and, and test X amount of meters that, that we, that we want to test.
Okay, and you identify the process of identifying who those meters are based on, how you told your case to get back from December thirteen, January seventeen, you know, period?
We, we can, but, um, we, we're definitely open to any suggestions, um, again, since you had a lot here, different lanes, by all means, we want to make sure that, that we satisfy those people, so, again, we definitely, we open, open to any representation, and like I said, we initially thought we had to do a ten, but if it's, if we can do twenty, then it'll be twenty.
I want to figure out a way that we can get this information out to our community, uh, whether it's on social media, through our website, through the newspaper, or through this, uh, uh, the newspaper, if you're recording, and she, you know, she is, you know, getting out to our community, if they have an IUD build, or that, or period, the touch base, or very intelligent director, and make sure they are aware of that testing, that's being, uh, sure they act, see those meters, uh, as far as their diligence, but in the meantime, I think as collective council members, we also have, we are diligent, and, and, and be the help of, 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 uh, so, what I would like to do, while that's going on, and when I don't have to do this any longer, is to make a motion, if I could, to bring ordinance or bill two thousand sixteen dash twenty back on the agenda for the next council meeting, uh, for further discussion, and, uh, Zach response back, um, maybe in that time, those who do the tests, but we'd like to do that. I don't want to send that out too much.
Right, um, I don't know, we probably, they probably won't be here before our next council meeting.
So with the following council meeting, which would be?
Would be, would be the second one, if I, that, that would be fine.
Okay, so I'll make the motion.
Counselor, is that all right, that we knew that?
Yeah, because, uh, Corinne, I spoke briefly about this prior to the meeting, but if the city council desires to reconsider the electric rate ordinance, the way, the proper way to do that would be to bring the previous ordinance back up for discussion, I think discussing the council, the correct staff, however, wishes.
Okay, I would make a motion to bring, uh, two thousand sixteen dash twenty back on the agenda for discussion, and follow up with Zach, as he continues his work toward trying to have the answer to why you told your bills were high, and localized locations throughout our community, um, based on generalized funding, on, on, the project, and all of and localized locations throughout our community based on generalized funding on the project alone of minus 1.73.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. The next item on the agenda is new business. We will now have a full reading on Bill 2017-14. Bill 2017-14. An ordinance authorizing the city manager of the city of Cameron, Clinton, DeKalb, and Caldwell Counties Missouri to enter to a professional services agreement with the Department of West Incorporated for design of Prospect, Prospect Street improvement project. I will now entertain a motion to pass Bill 2017-14 on a full reading. Do I hear, do I hear motion?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor. This is, as stated in the title, improvements on Prospect Street from Walnut to Mulberry Street area. Includes addition of storm sewer, curb getter, compliant sidewalks, driveway improvements to landscaping on both sides from Walnut to that area. Design bidding portion of this agreement is anticipated to be completed by early fall and out to bid then early winter. Construction completion early summer next season. For this agreement, it does include the full inspection, which is estimated at 16 weeks for the construction observation services and 16 weeks for our construction time. So the fee for both services is thinking out to exceed the amount of 162, 231. We're recommending the council adopt the attached bill for Bartlett West for the design and infrastructure improvements on Prospect Street. And I would add that Prospect Street, again, is on our transportation list. It was the next street on our project since the Grove Street project didn't work out for this current construction season. It is a shorter project and a smaller dollar project than Grove Street was.
Prior to this, have you visited with the, or do we wait till after this is done?
On Prospect Street? We really wait, the first step would be is they'll get their survey crews out here, they'll do a full survey, then go through a preliminary design. Then at that point, they need to, which there's, which there always is, special or extenuating survey chances, one or more property owners visit that specific property or. Otherwise, we do like to do all the other projects, we have a public meeting. Once we have our preliminary plans in, which then allow the property owners to commit. Look at the plans with their property, ask questions of both city staff as well as design and engineers. At that point, most of the time, we usually have to go back and tweak the special requests. So we would anticipate that we would probably be sitting in the morning or October, somewhere in fall, I'd say fall, fall or this season.
Okay.
Could I just record a patient from like, could you tell me these that amount of that seat again?
I believe it was 162. 162, or is it? 162, 3, 21, I believe.
Could it be 162, 3, 31?
It could be. It could be, 3, 31.
I'm making it.
Yeah.
I may have misheard you, but I thought you said 162, 231. For the benefit of folks who are watching online, I wanted to make sure that was clarified. So that was the reading I had to clarify. But I don't mind hearing anything tonight, so I just want to make sure we don't leave wrongs anybody.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, discussion?
I just have a little real quick question for you. Would this be a long this far project, does that mean that there's a potential we could get something else in, in a year or maybe find some, no?
Doubtful. Doubtful.
Okay, no, I just, I wasn't sure since you had stated you were gonna take it a little outside and running. So I just didn't know if we were gonna try to get on to the next step or something else. And that's fine, I just.
No, and the next item on the agenda is still some Grove Street items too, which Grove Street is designed and ready to go and is a large project because it's actually two projects rolled into one. And then I don't know if our fund would have enough.
Okay.
Really, too.
That's fine.
Generally, it's not a project that quickly.
So nothing scheduled at this point?
Nothing scheduled, correct.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Anyone else have anything? Anywho, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. I will now entertain a motion to suspend the rule to pass Bill 2017-14 on a second reading.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. I will entertain a motion to pass Bill 2017-14 on a second reading by roll call.
Second.
Charlie Ruckridge?
Yes.
Dennis M. Clark?
Yes.
John R. Fivert?
Yes.
Ronnie Jack?
Yes.
El Cora Sloan?
Yes.
And we will now have a full reading on Bill 2017-15. Bill 2017-15. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Cameron, Clinton, DeKalb Counties Missouri, Caldwell Counties. To accept property located along Grove Street as permanent drainage eases. I will now entertain a motion to pass Bill 2017-15 on a full reading.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Thank you. Previously mentioned Grove Street was our project for this current calendar year. Grove Street was identified through both transportation improvement, Eight Street is identified through stormwater through the funds. So both rolled into one project, it would have been Grove Street from Fourth to Eighth and Eight Street from Grove Street back through West Street. During the design process, it was determined that additional right of way required for your structure such as the stormwater drainage as well as sidewalks. Consequently, we identified that riding on additional property required to be dedicated as permanent right of way and drainage easements. And we obtained signatures from all but one, two property owners. Those property owners had not signed the necessary documents to allow for the construction of the project. So unfortunately, we were not able to move forward with this project. Even if we could work out something due to the time of year, we would not be able to get this size of the project bid out and worry about construction going this season. And we do have a design, I think it is ready to go, all but two property owners. One of the property owners was on Burnell West Street. We initially did not have a need for permanent drainage easement. The property owner indicated that they were willing to work with us, so we were able to eliminate a couple drop boxes, a couple junction boxes and save a substantial amount of money. But since that time, they still indicate to us that they're willing to sign, but we've reached out to them on a number of occasions, haven't heard anything back. Then we have one more property owner on the corner where there's no other way around it. We worked with design engineers, took a look at it in different directions, different sized pipes. It's just not going to be possible without that easement for the drainage easement. However, the rest of the property owners on the project were willing and interested in having this project and did sign their permanent. And I'm combining both of these and the one I may add too, because we kept in this two separate ordinances, one for the right of way and then one for the drainage easements. They're both through this Grove Street project, they're just titled by ordinance. So I believe we can track what is permanent drainage and permanent right of way for recorded purposes. So that is both this and as well as the next. But most of these folks have signed these documents months and months ago, which we had a meeting, some of them even as far as last calendar year. So we'd like to go ahead and get these recorded. Don't really have anything else to add unless you have a question.
Do I have any questions for? Anywho, we proceed to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. I will now entertain a motion to suspend the rule to pass Bill 2017-15 on a second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. I will now entertain a motion to pass Bill 2017-15 on a second reading by roll call.
Second.
Dennis M. Clark?
Yes.
John R. Fivert?
Yes.
Ronnie Jack?
Yes.
El Cora Sloan?
Yes.
Charlie Ruckridge?
Yes.
Okay, we will now have a full reading on Bill 2017-16. Bill 2017-16. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Cameron, Clinton, DeKalb, and Caldwell Counties Missouri to accept properties located along Grove Street and along Eight Street as public right of way. I will now entertain a motion to pass Bill 2017-16 on a full reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Group, do you have anything to add?
No.
Seeing none, we proceed to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. I will now entertain a motion to pass Bill 2017-16 on a second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. I will now entertain a motion to pass Bill 2017-16 on a second reading by roll call. Barbara? Motion?
Second.
Okay, Barbara, now to the turn. John R. Fivert?
Yes.
Ronnie Jack?
Yes.
El Cora Sloan?
Yes.
Charlie Ruckridge?
Yes.
Dennis M. Clark?
Yes.
Okay, we now have, the next item on the agenda is a full reading of Bill 2017-17. Bill 2017-17. An ordinance approving an agreement between the city of Cameron, Clinton, DeKalb, and Caldwell Counties Missouri and CMG Grave Service for the purpose of cemetery determines at the five city semesters. I will now entertain a motion to pass Bill 2017-17 on a full reading. Second. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the opening and closing of graves with CMG's Grave Services. Has been our successful bidder, we started bidding this in 2002 over the history. We started bidding the opening and closing of the five cemetery zones in our management of the city of Cameron for the opening and closing of graves. CMG Grave Service was the lowest and best bid, has been a successful low bidder on this contract since that time. Including the last bid in 2015, that are currently our contracted for this. City Clerk did prepare our bids and published a bid notice to the local paper. We had the bid opening, we actually had two bidders, one was CMG Grave Service, the other one was Midwest Cemetery Services, were the two bids submitted. I believe you guys have a little bid tab there, there's a couple different categories from opening and closing, information opening and closing, infant opening and closing, plus weekdays, Saturdays, and then Sundays and holidays. Each had a different fee breakdown. City Clerk did meet with the cemetery board and reported that cemetery board recommended to approval of the agreement with CMG Grave Service. Even though they were not the lowest bid, I know Kurt Thompson is here to see, I think if there's any detailed questions that I could answer. I will say that, again, having worked with CMG Grave Service for a number of years, looking back through, historically looking back through our records for the last few years, majority of the open enclosings or services conducted by Paula Thompson for this. And the way the agreement works for this is that it's the responsibility of the vendor to collect and bill for all services. So with the cemetery board's recommendation and then also again, majority of our opening closings are through Paula Thompson here in town.
Anyone have any questions for group?
I do. Actually, we're a little surprised to hear that. As I'm going through this, I don't know the difference between the two companies, so maybe CMG provides a much better service. Like every single service that they provide is less by $50 except for the infant child opening and close, which is the exact same price. Some of these prices are $200 less, $150 less, $100 less. As a skirt of money that, that the people in Cameron put me, these, to me, this makes no sense. Why would we pay more on every single service? So I'm not saying that the board, I'm not necessarily going against the board, I'm just trying to understand the reasoning behind picking some of it on every single level is more expensive than the other one. I do not.
You are correct. Again, I think it's the history with CMG Grave Service. They've been doing this service for the city for a long number of years, always provide exceptional service. Also, being a local vendor, when there is an issue, which frequently is, for example, I'm not saying the other company would not do this, but from my own personal knowledge, I'd like to make great work to settle out over time. CMG is extremely responsive, comes right out, takes care of leveling everything back out. They work with our city staff, do exceptional job. It's a tough situation.
Do we know if that works? I mean, is there, is there some concerns with Midwest? I'm just, I just want to make sure before I vote that I have a good understanding. Because I do know sometimes you're a lot lower priced because, well, quite honestly, you don't really provide a covering service. But I also know that other times you do, you just have to be trying to establish your coverage. I don't know anything about any of these two companies.
I don't know anything about the White House or anything, because that all, I mean, all have it. And the way, the way the process works, we contract with the grave service company and they charge the individual, it's not city money that we're spending.
Okay.
So it's, they, they, they work with the families or the old, the enclosings in the city like spaces, I have the, or cemetery sets and market spaces and they give the holes and do the covering and all of that. And then the individual, the family pays the company that he contracts with.
Okay, so this is not covered now?
Right, right.
All I have to say is, in the local company, they've established themselves and I just like to do the local stuff.
CMG's local? Well, okay.
I agree, that's a, this type of thing is an incredible stress of time. And for $50 difference, to me, the cemetery board, this is their thing, they understand it. They're sitting there saying this is our reputation, my, very comfortable.
Anyone else?
I would just echo the same, unfortunately, it's a, it's a very sad time, obviously. CMG Grave Service is a, well, we're not comparing to Midwest, which I believe is a better. And as the city clerk ultimately pointed out, the opening and closing is done by the family that's here. Their parents are not, I think, in there. So I agree with your counsel, but the cemetery board recommendation, you know, is our local service cemetery is a, would be, would be great for this. Based on that.
Anyone else have any else, any else to say? If not, we proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2017-12. Resolution 2017-12, a resolution for the city of Cameron, Clinton, DeKalb, and Holwell Counties, Missouri, accepting a bid to the Reserve Department of Transportation bids for an F-250 medium-duty vehicle and associated insurance body equipment, and declaring a 2006 F-250 to be surplus and sold. I will now entertain a motion to pass Resolution 2017-12.
Second.
Or a second?
Second.
If this were the purchase of a 2017 F-250 cabin chassis and associated utility service body equipment, this truck would be utilized by our work release crews. Either a four-door truck, four-wheel drive, standard crew cab, with utility body, very similar to the one we have now, which is a 2006 F-250 crew cab. The purchase of this would be replaced with truck for this. So with the approval of this resolution, you ask also that the council declare the current unit surplus. We will use any money from the sale towards the purchase of this new truck. Delivery of the truck to your project in ninety to a hundred days from the date of council approval. Price of the truck, cabin chassis, is, the price of the truck is twenty-nine thousand eight oh four. The total delivery price should be thirty-seven seven eight four for a complete unit. Funding for this purchase is included in our solid waste capital projects fund, it was budgeted twenty-nine thousand. We were also successful in obtaining a grant of twenty thousand dollars for the purchase of a new recycling truck through Regent D Recycling and Waste Management this year. So the grant will cover over fifty percent of the purchase, leaving a total cost of solid waste capital fund budget of seventeen thousand seven hundred eight four. Well under our twenty-nine thousand budget. We are utilizing the state of Missouri Department of Transportation bids for this. The Shaw Mission Ford was one of the Missouri Department of Transportation medium-duty vehicle bid awards. So we will be utilizing Shaw Mission Ford for the purchase of this truck.
Have any questions for Paul or?
There's a number of things, an estimate, it's a 2006, it is a two-wheel drive. Truck is utilized for recycling operations, which cover our almost entire town on a daily, weekly basis. It has extremely high miles, it has major transmission issues, as well as some other steering issues. I can't think of too detailed, but I think the cost that when we looked at the transmission and some of the other issues was exorbitant compared to the year of vehicle, the extremely high miles on it.
Another question, I thought our work release program was able to maintain that, am I wrong on that?
No, we're still doing the work release program. There was a number of months where we were not able to get inmates. We work with Western Surgery Corrections Center, WFCC, where our inmates and work release vendors come from. Those are groups we should try to pick up anywhere from three to four inmates as a good number for us. We utilize them to do the recycling, a lot of other building maintenance and mowing, et cetera. So when we don't have those crews or whatever the reason, there's been a number of reasons over the years where they've been laid in for a day, a week, sometimes like this last time, a couple of months. It really puts us in a box, and so, and unfortunately, it happened right at April, March, April, right when the growing season started. We were trying to scramble cover with other departments. As of right now, we are working with the WFCC and are back to a full work release crew.
Anyone else have any question?
Actually, we just have one other question. When we're looking at vehicles, and by the way, great job of paying the grant, appreciate that. The question I have is, do we ever really have, say, a two-year-old vehicle versus brand-new? Because just from a consumer standpoint, you go buy a new one, you know, you're, you're in top, you drive off, who's twenty percent? Something that fifteen or sixteen, it's got ten, twenty thousand miles, and it isn't going to matter if it's got four hundred thousand miles on the silver truck. But you just said hi, that's entirely made. So, anyway, so I'm just curious, do we look at used vehicles?
We have in some situations, but it's really difficult to find a vehicle that's specifically tailored to our needs, because these aren't used for the vehicles. So to me, every requirement that we need is really hard to find. You know, if it was a personal car, I would carry it this black or orange or purple, or, you know, all the way down to the color. But to some of the specifics, the utility bed, ways outfitted, you know, trailer, tow package for pulling trailers. We do try to, but in some situations, it's not always practical.
Okay.
I do know, as a matter of fact, I think of one of the trucks in our street department fleet that was actually purchased from a local used dealer, just didn't need as much technical, it's a little four-door Chevy Colorado. Didn't need as much technical, so it's, it worked out perfect, we took it as is.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Anyone else have anything to add, for any, for any, or non-mature?
All right, second.
We don't match anything.
Correct, we don't have to match anything. We knew we would, though it's, but it's twenty thousand dollars.
Nice.
Thank you.
I would support this also, because I'm not sure if we bought something used, but we would have been secure. I don't know how that part of it works, but, and I'm a used car person, if I owned cars, I mean, myself, I would use all the, never opened cars. But as I said, I support getting the staff, or they can set them up to succeed. Working with things that are great, you know, that I've done that when I was starting, it's, it's just not efficient, you know. So I, I would support this.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item is Resolution 2017-13. Resolution 2017-13, a resolution for the city of Cameron, Clinton, DeKalb, and Holwell Counties, Missouri, approving a project for Cameron Regional Medical Center Incorporated to be financed by industrial development authority that's in County Missouri. I will entertain a motion to pass Resolution 2017-13. Second. Any discussion?
If you can see a financial pain or a fan in Underwood, I believe it would be smart to use yourself, it's also smart to think about, think about conflicts.
I think it appears to come with, so just in case, if that's okay.
I just wanted to ask, my understanding would be that the city's really not on the line for any obligation with this, the measure, correct?
Correct, we're just basically the middle person. And we have Gilmore, we are, we are, we are, to speak up for this resolution. If you guys have any more questions.
Okay.
Mayor, that was my name, Richard Ryan, with Gilmore, that was my answer for this bond issue and all the prior bond issues for the medical center. And to answer your question, because the county IDA is the issuer of these bonds, and the medical center is located within the city limits of the city, the statute requires the project purchase of a portion of its financing to be approved by the city, it's basically a provision of the statute that keeps a county IDA from engaging in business in your city without your knowledge and permission. Likewise, if the city did a financing for a project that was outside of city limits and not incorporated county, you would have to reverse process, you would be standing for the county division, asking for approval. But specifically, there's no liability on the part of the city, and likewise, no liability on the part of the county for the county IDA approving the bond issue, it's payable solely from the revenues of the medical center that are pledged to repay them.
One more question. Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Four in favor, Ron. The next item is Resolution 2017-14. Resolution 2017-14, a resolution for the city of Cameron, Clinton, DeKalb, and Holwell Counties, Missouri, accepting a bid on automated weather observing system, AWAS stack, three feet, two, and awarding the bid, Kimery Electric. I will entertain a motion to pass Resolution 2017-14.
Second.
Any discussion?
What we're looking for here this evening for the resolution is accepting bids and awarding the low bid, Kimery Electric for the installation of an AWAS or automated weather observing system. We've been working on this project for years, I think by every three to six months, we're back in front of the city council on this project, and so we are getting to where we are actually to the final construction stage since 2013. We started with the design, the type, the analysis, the easements, the air space easements. So we did bid this project out, Kimery Electric was the low bidder on this. Was the notice of awards completed, which we'll look at this evening, you allow Kimery Electric to obtain all the bonding, insurance, and other documents required and enter into the contract, and bring back to the council for our final contract agreement. The low bid was two hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Was reviewed and approved by our engineering firm, Blockner Associates, as well as Bo Dot Aviation. The total cost of the project, including everything from advertising, bids, engineering, construction, construction observation services, is going to total two hundred and eighty-three thousand and nine dollars. It is included in our current capital approval plan in this fiscal year's budget. Funding for this project is also from grant money. This grant money does require a ten percent match, for a total of twenty-eight thousand three hundred dollars. Of that, remaining funds that we have to pay, so that was the design work that's already completed, approximately twenty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars would be the remaining cost to the city of Cameron. Grant money will cover the rest of it. So again, we're looking for the acceptance of bids, notice of award for Kimery Electric, bring that back to the contract for the council approval. I would anticipate that we'll also have another agreement with Bo Dot Aviation for the grant to coincide with the contract agreement in the future.
May I have any questions for group?
I did. This will be a day of the chair with one service neck, right?
It can be, right now there would be just three means, like Mike at the plane, you can call up, or physically at the airport. There'd be a cost of a dedicated phone line for us, we've looked into that, to give it back to the weather service, which will help make sure that the weather stations in our region, get to St. Joe, as well as individuals who are interested in the weather.
We have capability, I think that's the issue, of course, the capability is there.
The capability is there, correct.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. The next item is appointments, Parkour, planning, running commission, and order adjustments.
Parkour Department, just a real quick overview, it's a nine-member board, with members serving three-year terms. Terms are staggered, it's by the end of June. Last part of the member meeting, the Parkour did discuss and had a review and proof, and a recommendation to the mayor and city council for reappointment of the terms of Al Briggs, Corey Brown, and Kerry Cyent. All three have graciously agreed to volunteer their time and serve on the board for yet another three-year term. Question? Yes, sir.
Where, where was this noticed to the public? What I'm starting to see on a lot of these boards are the same people that are over and over and over again. The Parkour president, that I'm not even sure, I believe he was on the Parkour when my mom was, like, twenty years ago. I'm pretty sure it's about that time, right, anyway? And I'm starting to see same names, same types, when you talk to them, not necessarily having new ideas, new thought processes. They do a head of job, I'm not, I'm not saying if they exist in them, I just want to, how, how are we getting any new blood, if any, at least? And it's, I'm not just talking to Parkour here, I'm talking to everything. So, and sometimes I don't, can't find anybody else that wants to do it. But when you, when I go there, some of the people, some of the people, they go, yeah, I'll do it. I want, yes, I want to get in there, I want to get in and get it done, attitude, so, I'm just curious.
Good question, but we did not do the notice in the paper, we're very fortunate that we have a great Parkour, all nine members are very dedicated. Volunteer their time, as you know, it takes a lot of time to volunteer, it's hard to find board members, and there is zero compensation to any Parkour member for anything.
Right.
I don't know about other boards or commissions, but the Parkour is zero. All three were excited and again to give their time to help out, so we've been fortunate with the Parkour. And yes, Bill Gibson, I believe, has been on the Parkour for twenty-three years, and the president of the.
He was on there when I was on.
I, I would say that I'm very comfortable with the way we're doing it, the way, the reason is extremely difficult to get volunteers. There's also many instances, probably learning curves, where it takes a period, really, some years, so. Okay, I understand what you got there, but that's the poor, and so, it's getting tougher and tougher. If you look at service clubs, churches, whatever, it is getting increasingly difficult to get people to volunteer. And if we can get somebody to say yes, and, and the board is recommended, I'm fine with that.
Well, and here's, here's why I go back, and, not to disagree with the council, but the fact of the matter is, if they don't know that it's out there, I know there was a ground swell of volunteerism going on over the last couple of years. Whether it be Pat Jones and her crew, whether it be Nina, that, you know, we, I write down a list of names. And so if they don't know, they certainly can't volunteer. And if we continue to keep the same folks in, again, I have nothing against two of the three that were on there. And so, I'm just, I just would like to see in the future, for any board, that we at least put something out there to just see if there's any geniuses, as a. As a board member on another community organization, I know it is absolutely difficult to get folks. But I would, I'd rather next one is excited about it, and actually shows up to meetings and such, and in my section, maybe gives me blood. Has different thoughts, different ideas. I don't want you to learn how we've done it in the past. I want you to tell me what we can do differently, so. Anyway, just my thoughts.
My thoughts on it, I, I don't have a problem with people being on the board for a certain term limit. But I do have a problem with people, the same person being on two to three boards. Because I think that's a conflict of interest, when you have someone being on two boards.
The only thing I'll ask, I agree with the mayor, the councilman, the mayor, Richard Meyer. That would be something that you should, you could do a little bit. I don't think it's three, but I recommend.
Oh, I, I don't either, but I'm just saying, I, I hope that we don't have the same, same people on more than one board.
I don't know if we do or not, I know these not in the park board.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just doing it as a general statement.
We can do, anyway, if you prefer.
Aren't we, to have one member on the planning and zoning commission on the board adjustment, that is, that is a requirement. And I would secondly put Kent Omsford, stand down, I guess, on planning and zoning, and he's not. Okay. That was my question, that was my answer. So that is one, at least one board that I know is a requirement, to have that person on.
All I have to add is, if there's people interested, there is a vote of dissipation, just like there is here at the board, bring their ideas, get involved. Show them you want to be part of it, don't sit back and shoot seats and say, well, I don't know, but I mean, that, it's not that hard. It's on the city calendar, it's on the utility bill, next week, next Monday, it's part of, that's not a standard, it's just the park board. And there is vote of dissipation, get in there and get involved. Not trying to keep anybody down, most generally, from what I've seen in my term of service here, is that the people that are willing to stay on, pretty well. I mean, most generally, if, if they don't have the time to serve, they just like say, no, I can't do it anymore. And I know it's, it's tough for the people, so, but if anybody wants to get involved, it's not hard.
The department heads or the sponsor that group asks, and we need to continue. If someone says, no, I think I've done this long enough, then we do advertise, and we try and get, get people at that point in time. But with the, the board's recommending reappointment, and the people wanting to serve again, we don't. But if someone says, I'm done, can't do it, put a notice in the paper, it's very hard to get responses to those notes. So, on the website, and on Facebook, and on the media, and we're fortunate that those who are volunteering will continue to. Thank you, Mr. Park, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Now, can we do these all in one, or do we need to do them at one place? If someone's in the round one, I don't see, hold back what's on here, Mike, you're here.
Yeah, the invite to speak on for planning and zoning board adjustments. I'm the chairman of planning and zoning, and I can, I can tell you right now, we have one seat open on planning and zoning. We have advertised by the newspaper, by the website, everything, and we still have an open seat, okay? We cannot get anybody to even offer their time, okay? Board of adjustments, just now, is, has a person to fill the seat of five. That board requires that we have four individuals present for a quorum, okay, on board of adjustments. We have been trying for probably two to three years to fill that position, and we just now have one to fill it. The person that's going to fill possibly the board adjustment seat has been serving as an alternate between board adjustment and planning and zoning. I don't like that, okay? You cannot take an alternate and move them back and forth between planning and zoning and board of adjustments, because it does two things. It doesn't give the board, either board, it's not fair to them, they don't know what's going on, okay? And then the person or individuals that were actually looking at their cases, that person that's filling the position on the board for that one night, out of maybe two or three months. They don't have the background information they need to make a good decision, so that applicant may not get just cause, okay? But to answer that question of filling the position, it is very, very difficult. We would, we would honor anybody that would come forward and say, hey, we would like to serve on my planning and zoning board. I would love that, but I can't get anybody, because we need another, we need another seat filled, really bad. The good thing about board of adjustments is that they don't meet very frequently, and so that's worked out pretty well. And we always have a quorum of four, but we have had the council meetings because we only have three. So planning and zoning has a, has a board of seven, we have now a board of six, and we normally can get four for a quorum. Not too often do we ever have a council meeting for that, but we do try. I, I know over the years that I've been doing this, we try and try and try, and we advertise, and we have a list, and we call them and everything, and it just, it just hasn't happened. And to answer that question that Barbara gave you, board of adjustment requires that a, a, a planning and zoning individual slide over from planning and zoning to board of adjustments. And I've filled that slot for several years, because, but actually, nobody else wants to. So, so I've done that, so. Here again, if somebody else wants to come in and fill those slots, I'd be more than happy to step down, but that's kind of the history of what's going on.
Thank you, I understand, you, you will like, be clarified, you know, you don't know if you don't ask, right?
Yeah, I think what the mayor said, you know, that's a clarification, we weren't sure, I, I would share all the process with it, and very well explained, and I greatly appreciate it. So, thanks to all that explained that process. I'll have a little further comment, it's not quite correct, but so on. For me, a, a decision by a board who works in a specific area, knows what's required, what's learning curve, all this kind of stuff. That recommendation was heavy for me, because I want to see them succeed, and we all know that there are personalities out there that are going to be nothing but disruptive. And are going to keep the success of the board, board being serving the public. So I, I guess just, you know, as, as we listen to this, you sure, what statement to the council recommendations of various boards, in almost all cases, and quite all, there are. And I greatly appreciate it.
Alright, I mean, you decide if we want to do this all on one group, or break them down into different groups?
Is there a required question to be done? All on one group? I would make a motion that we take all the appointments into consideration for one vote, as they are presented.
Very good.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on it? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, we will vote. And we thank the board and the others who decided. Okay, alright, thank you. Okay, the next item is public participation. If you wish for a rest council, please step to podium, so you can have a, please sign and shake, and contact the manager, and give him five minutes to speak.
I'm not, I just want to begin. Good, thank you, you're speaking on a different topic, you know. Right, well, I actually did want to mention one thing about the special project that we asked for, and I did check on two things, I asked for financial support. But then I, I did also ask for a, a, what was it? What was it?
Approval.
Approval, okay. Or some kind of a sanction of the arts festival and so forth, I think that, that could be a second count, we, we appreciate that. Because I do believe that it will all, believe in the arts in our children.
So, I'm not sure how we will plead with that.
There'd be a motion to approve just what's a view of state in the application. Instead of the application, it would be like, resub, you should officially, so we can actually prepare that for the next council meeting. If the council wants to go ahead and pass a resolution, and officially endorse it.
Just, it's, it doesn't have to be a chief, that, just to give you a special, against committee.
Only if there would be alcohol or any type of function of that, that would have to go through for a special.
Never under some time, is it? Can we ask now, is it appropriate to ask for a resolution?
I would say a motion, yes, you make a motion, city council directing staff from here, a resolution to officially endorse.
Kimery Arts.
Kimery Arts Festival.
Very second?
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five in favor, we will vote.
Well, thank you very much, and I'll be a great meeting. It's important to city and all of our members.
Thank you. After seeing there is no other participation, we will vote next one, Barbara. Councilman Clark, fire?
I wanted to give a special thanks to the police and fire, county, state troopers, everybody that worked together to, to apprehend the escaped convict. They did a head of job, and it was quick, so congratulations to everybody involved in that, great job, what you did.
Just a couple of things, the hunger room, I see that it's expectations, in that they are targeting the community government, and things like that. Over the memorial weekend, the cemetery is, we're actually, we're pleased to pass on my thanks to our city group that takes care of that, and care of the mission. And I also, as you answered, I think I've mentioned, the last council meeting, or a career after last council meeting, I think, the first big public statement that Walmart, or R &amp; G Services, well, the first year of the mission, that would be a lot of things.
Councilman Jack?
I'm good.
Back?
Thanks for that, good night.
Uh, fire chief? Chief, I don't know. And Paul, I think you're back there, you got anything to say?
No, I'm good.
Earl, do you have anything, group?
Actually, just two reminders, one, we're still working on tree inventory, we're working mats, healthy wood, wildlife, he's a UTV. He is inventorying every single tree in the Radcliffe, so just a reminder, somebody sees, somebody in front of your house measuring and looking at your trees, it's, it's a, do a trim, right? We get a ten thousand dollar grant, so you should be out probably even half weekends or the next week, we can have it, putting in a survey. And also, park board is working on a parks and recreation survey, that is still, link is still open, just remind everybody to jump online. Anyone can take the online version, that is our parks and recreation facilities.
Tim, do you have anything?
No.
And council? And I have nothing, so I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Sir, second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Five in favor, we will vote.